Thank you very much, Lori. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending the City of North Plains City Council regular session meeting Monday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty four at seven o'clock. We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mayor Lenahan?
Here.
Counselor Fage?
Yeah.
Counselor Kendall?
Here.
Counselor Papen?
Here.
Counselor Sheldon?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Mayor.
And Counselor Martinez is excused and will join us if she's able to later.
Great. Thank you, Lori. That's a show. We are a little definitely hybrid this evening. We have folks who are not feeling up to par, and so it looks like Dr. Andrew Van Buren and Finance Director Bill Reed are joining us from Zoom, and Zoe Stetson, there he is, great. So certainly appreciate everybody's patience while we navigate this. And moving to our consent agenda, we have the approval of the April fifteenth twenty twenty four regulations that were made. The approval of April first two minutes, and was one hundred and fifty sixty declaring support for the Washington County Justice System. Do I have any corrections or additions to the minutes that I interviewed? We need to be aware of.
I'm out of here.
Yes.
I believe there's a reference in the minutes on April first to Rick and Smith as an ex officio. And I don't think that's the the proper place for that. Because he wasn't an ex officio at our meeting, so that may have.
Where's this?
In our April first minutes.
Oh. You are correct. I will, I will strike that from the minutes. You're right. I will pick that out. My apologies.
That's all I have.
Any other corrections? Is that our entertainment motion approved if consent was done with the correction?
I'll second.
All right. We have the first by Counselor Kendall, second by Counselor Page. Any discussion? Very none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Thank you. And thank you, Counselor Papen. I can see your hand. All right. Item number seven is public comments is the time that we wish that we welcome the public to the table to talk about things that are not on the agenda. Anyone in the hall that wishes to speak? Let the record show, there is no one here for public comment. Agent Simeon, Lori, have you received anything online?
Nothing prior to tonight's meeting.
Anyone online? Let the record show, no one on Zoom is waiting on hand to speak during public comment. All right. This evening, we have our friends from the Family Justice Center here to speak with us this evening, so we certainly look forward to your presentation. So Rachel and Judy, please come up. Thank you for being here. Name and list for the record, that's everything.
So my name's Judy Willie.
And for folks on Zoom, yeah, you can have the board in.
Can you make sure the button's pushed? It should be on, on the top of the microphone? Okay, good.
My name's Judy Willie, and I am president of the Family Justice Center Board of Directors. And every year, we get the privilege to come and visit different cities and share our story about what's happened in recent years and all the changes and the exciting things that are going on in the Family Justice Center. I want to thank the council mayor for allowing us to do this. Not a nonprofit does it, but we are thrilled to do it every year just to make sure that everyone in the room knows and everyone in our cities knows what we're doing and how well and healthy we are and where we're headed. So that's the reason we're speaking. So thank you, thank you for the time. We appreciate, appreciate the opportunity. And as you probably know, the, my role in this, Rachel's gonna share with you some facts about the, what's happening in the city and the exciting things that happened in twenty twenty three and some things that are going to happen in twenty twenty four. My role in this is to share that the things outside the center, of course, one of them is we have a really very healthy board, and I want to thank also thank for allowing his wife to be a part of that board.
She's still around, that's why.
When she jumped on and spoke, and she was great for playing basketball. So thank you. It's great to have that. That's what we're looking forward to in our board. We have some vacancies right now, and we're looking forward to adding getting everything in our family involved. And knowing first, you know, what that would do, so that that word gets out better and faster than we can do once a year. So the other thing is that we, as most of you know, we have, hope you know, haven't heard, we have purchased a new building. And we will be changing our name from Family Justice Center to Family Peace Center. Because that feels more comfortable for us. The Word Justice is, it is nationally known, but it just, but for our, what we do, we felt like many of these centers better name for us. But we will be changing that name quite yet. We plan to do it as we move in. And it's a, it's a much larger building than we have, and it will be fairly near as far as, which is child abuse. And into our center, and that is a reason we started looking for a much higher, like, three years ago, I think, that we started down that road. And we have now based on that funny device of building, and we are now in the process of remodeling for all of our partners. And at this time, we have twenty one partners in the center, which is much higher than we had in the past. And so we're needing the role we have. And our move in May, twenty twenty six, early twenty twenty six, is our, our goal, to be moving into that center. And I think I said everything without even looking at my phone. That's really good. So I can talk to you and not, not reading to you. We just have a lot going on. And Rachel, our executive director, most of you do know her, and she's going to now tell you more about the center.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you again for having us. We really appreciate it. Appreciate this opportunity. I especially appreciate getting that opportunity to meet with our more rural cities, because the, the need for services is certainly there, but the connectedness of the communities makes a really big difference in the types of services that we can provide and the kinds of conversations we can have with you guys. And really consistently, our smaller and more rural cities are the ones that step up higher in order to provide services for their citizenry. And that just shows how much and how closely connected the cities are and the communities are, and how much they care. Not that the large cities don't care. It's just that it's so frequently the case that everybody knows the name and the base of somebody that could potentially use these services, that they think of somebody when we come and speak with you. And so that makes a really big difference. And it's always been a really big difference in speaking with the councils, but then also in the lengths that you guys are willing to go and the creative ideas that you have to help support the individuals that come from your cities. And so that has continuously shaped the way that we wanted to deliver services in our rural communities. And our growth needs continue to be a high priority for all of us. One of the big successes that we had last year was getting to partner with Ride Connection and providing free door-to-door services for individuals in our rural communities to the Family Justice Center. No matter how many times they wanted to come, no matter how often they needed to get those rides, Ride Connection was willing to go all throughout our rural communities, our unincorporated areas of Washington County, and pick up those folks. And what was really remarkable for me was we had the conversations about, you know, this is a small town. They could feel uncomfortable or unsafe to have somebody come up to their house. You know, they don't necessarily want to give their name, what if they know the driver? You know, just all those types of things that come with smaller communities, and they said, not a problem. They can give us a fake name. We can meet somewhere that is not their home. We can get those landmarks that all small communities have, such as the corner store or the library or what have you. And Ride Connection was just right there. And the reason that we were able to build that partnership was because of our close relationship with these, with our rural cities. Because you guys gave us the ideas to get better transportation because of these conversations with you. You gave us the ideas to reach out to the more local places, the names of the places where people tend to congregate and get a lot of services. And so I just really thank you guys for your partnership, because you have driven so many more services into your communities farther west so that we can. And we've seen a really big increase in the number of folks that are coming from rural areas. We saw a twenty-six percent increase, which is pretty big in one year, including folks that don't, that are rural and don't live in Washington County. So our folks in Vernonia or Timber or out in Tullamook, so really west, where there really isn't services, and then down more south, pushing into Yamhill County. And so that has made a really big difference, because we know that folks move around, that they come to visit, you know, families in smaller cities, that they're starting to see those resources. We've also increased our outreach in general with going around and being present at a lot more community events. We got the opportunity to be at National Night Out last year, and that was fantastic. I was deeply overshadowed by the library behind me and books, and they were just the most content. I'm not the most content. But we were able to really reach folks where they were into the community, and that is really important. We were also able to expand the partnerships that we had. We brought on three new partners, Sequoia Mental Health, so that we could get folks diagnosed and also medication management if needed. And what was really important was they also provided services for the children of survivors. We also brought on Oregon Food Bank, that now partners with our very small food pantry, but they provide us food every week, because that is so often such a huge need, particularly for survivors. One of the number one reasons that folks go back time after time is because they lack the resources to stand on their own feet, and so they have to go back to the person, even though they were harming them. It's better than, as some folks have told me, being homeless, which is really hard here. And so Oregon Food Bank is a really critical partner in that, providing those basic food services. And then also, we were able to bring on other London medics to provide their Beyond Trauma group on month after month, year after year, which is fantastic for our community that are nearly speak Spanish and needs the corporally appropriate supports. So overall, we serve more people than we've ever served, as you saw in the report, but we served over fifty-six hundred survivors last year with over ten thousand services, and that's the most that we've ever done. And we pretty consistently see month over month more people than we ever thought that we were going to be able to see. And that, that always begs the question, does that mean that things are getting worse in our community? And I don't think that it does. I actually think that that means things are getting better. And that's a really odd thing for me to say, but what it tells me is that the information is starting to get out there, and people are starting to be comfortable having the conversations and are comfortable finding their access points. What we know is that forty-two percent of the population experiences domestic violence. And that's a huge number, and that is not fifty-six hundred. You know, so we have a lot of unmet need, but now we're starting to see the need get met. I expect this to go up and up, even though we wish that it wouldn't. But I think that it's gonna go up a lot farther before we start to see it come down. I think it's gonna start coming down in the younger generations, but right now, I think we're still catching up with long and long-term unmet need. In fact, I talked with somebody today that called me to say, you know, I didn't even know before, before I even ran into your organization and learned about you through something completely different, something in the community. I had no idea that my marriage, the entire time that I've been in it, was a domestic violence marriage. I had no idea. I didn't even put the two and two together. Nobody had ever told me that there's nothing, nothing had ever indicated to me. But when I heard about you guys and what you did, it didn't, it was the first time that it occurred to me that that could be happening to me. And so there's just this really entrenched and ingrained sense that it's only happening to me, this is normal, that this is something that we don't talk about, that this is something that happens inside of closed doors, inside of a family. This is a private issue. The things that happen inside of people's homes are something that we keep for ourselves, we keep within the family, and that's starting to change. And so that's why I think that things are starting to increase. So all of the ways that I talked about you guys partnering with us to reach your communities is critical right now. Because as, as we are opening that door to that conversation, it's very important the community around those individuals are willing to have that conversation. So these meetings with you guys, your willingness to reach out, your willingness to put our information in so many community spaces, to have us in your city where people already gather, is so important for folks to feel safe, that they can start talking about what might be happening with them, good, bad, or indifferent, starting to have that conversation with their neighbors and their friends about what's going on with their lives. So that means a lot. And last year, just to wrap up, we served seven North Plains survivors with eighteen services. That was actually a decrease over the last couple of years, which I was a little bit surprised about. And so I actually came to ask you guys tonight, what sort of brainstorming do you think we can do to do a little bit more outreach?
So we have a new food bank. Well, the food bank has been reactivated, and I'm sure maybe you know that.
Yeah, Danielle was just talking to us about it.
Yeah, so that, that would be, I think, is a good place also to go and talk to the gal who runs the bank and food bank, you know, and have the information there. That's the first thing that comes to my mind. Any other thoughts from Counselor, Counselor Lynn?
Sure. Back in January, we both suspended the mental health facility that Washington County is putting together. I'm pretty sure we're up.
Yeah, cap.
Right. And my big concern is coordination. They said one area coordinated, but that's not really being done yet. And then putting the facility in, I know there's Life Works out there, there's Sequoia. I think there's another one over on Western, the world, I can't think of the name right now. It's a volunteer organization. But when I was there, Mayor Cornelius brought up that he somebody that wanted to get mental health care, he took it to four different locations and got nowhere. So my concern is with some of these organizations like Sequoia and Life Works, they do have a high turnover. And I'm not sure what kind of success you're having with Sequoia. Sometimes even though they need an advocate, if they don't have the advocate, it's all, even though they're going, the fault could crack.
Yeah.
And so that's my main, big main concern.
Yeah.
Yes, once they get there, or if they can get there.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure, I'm not happy they're gonna put the new building in, but I think they didn't get their things in a row before we get a facility.
Yeah.
And maybe that's a conversation to have.
Yeah.
Yeah. Definitely a feedback and a good reminder for us, too, to always be so careful and intentional with that coordination for folks.
Unless you get a, a pattern going with certain ones.
Yeah.
Once they break that pattern, then you're starting off over again.
Yeah, yeah.
The travelers.
But I think it's just very, very serious stuff, and very bad. And maybe the name, like you said, the name change might help a little bit, too.
Yeah.
The Family Justice, I didn't know what Family Justice was for a while.
Yeah.
But now that I know, I'm a big supporter of this organization.
Thank you for those reminders and your comments.
I have a couple of things.
That's fine. I'll get it.
Sorry about the malfunction there. Basically, from the, you're, you spoke about dissemination of information, right? So certainly the chamber can help with that. I don't know if you have any print literature, if you can get something to us, even if it's not print literature. We do our welcome package that goes to all of our new water accounts, whether it's a new house or a previous home. And so that's something we do on an ongoing basis. So certainly that's a way to disseminate it. We can certainly disseminate, it could be an email to our members, and that can bleed throughout the community. But that, that is one way, obviously, that we can make sure that we're forefront of, especially new folks coming into town who might be new to the state or maybe even the country in some cases. So, you know, I think about what's available for them, and in a lot of cases, they're kind of lost until they get some orientation. A lot of those welcome packets aren't just coupons for discounts locally. Our businesses, obviously, are interested in seeing people, but also disseminating information. So I would encourage that.
That's great.
So in our plans, we have a Facebook meeting. When I, when I go to Rockaway Beach, it's another community there. I know that Danielle does post on our community page. However, since everybody has Facebook, our audience must be available, the centrical presence of freedom who are in charge of your media, maybe you can join yours, you can join the groups in around the area. And then it probably is the same template, use, this talking about service that they have, then it is a family, you know, this every four months is there. If people see it every month, they'll notice that. You always feature, people always go back to the store. I think it was pretty simple, like, for most people. I wanted to talk a little bit about what I like about what you have been so far. I had a managing meeting, a personal managing meeting over at the place I work, and a bunch of personal managers, like, you know, people have a lot of trip reports that are in the factory and work with the contractors that do, so we can go and tell. And I brought up your page, just so people know about the personal managers, because the amount of people that do it is a lot. So we brought up your page, talked about it, and we decided to test it out. And we're typing there. And one of the things that usually you're being watched right now, or you're being monitored. But yes, I took the shirt to Google. That's very nice. And I'm looking at it, and it was a big sweep, and I push it, but she hit the Google. So I'd want to say I would be very happy that you guys stole the buckle. And you guys have not even the outreach, but when you, people are already seeking, are looking at it. It's pretty buckle. I mean, it's pretty well thought out. So thanks.
Counselor, let me ask Counselor Lynn first. You're good?
Okay.
He came up with the name of looking for nanny.
Ah, yes, yep.
Have you talked to them?
Yeah.
They're more volunteer sports, right?
Yeah. Where they're supporting folks and their families.
Classes, stuff like that.
Okay. Thank you. Um, just a, a slightly personal story, not too, it, it, but I had a call from a friend of a child. So I have two daughters and I have two stepchildren, and I received a phone call from a friend of one of them. And she said, I need help, right? And I pointed her in your direction. And then about a week or so later, I got a text message from her, and she said, thank you. Like, she, she found the help that she was looking for, you know? I had not talked to this woman for years, but she, in her mind, she's like, oh, maybe Terry knows something, you know, and Terry has a resource. And so it was really, it, it felt really great and good and impactful, but for her. And so I was really glad that she was able to connect with you and your organization. I don't know, you personally, but Family Justice Center, so. Yeah.
That's why we care.
Yeah, it was nice. It was nice. Other than helping you disseminate the information or giving you these, is there anything else that you need from us, or would like to see from us helping you?
There was an idea. Forest Grove asked if they had a resource page on their city website. Because sometimes people go to the city website to see what are the city resources. And so you can link Family Justice Center on your city website if you have a resources area, such as I am hearing something going on with my neighbors, or I want to make a report of child abuse, or any of those types of things. That's something that you guys can do.
I know we have a link on our e-Connect newsletter. And I just pulled that up, but we do have a resource in that FAQ tab. And so I think the powers that be, Andy and Lori and others are probably hearing that. So I'm sure they'll figure out how we can dial it in.
Yeah. And how can we best support you guys?
Yeah, I love it that you were here for National Night Out. I think there's another organization, North Plains Boys Association in town, that coordinates a lot of our events, you know, from the Garland Festival to the George Cook Off and things like that. So, you know, I think maybe connecting with that organization, that group of, of people, and you have two members sitting right beside you. We can certainly, you know, discuss it with the board, but, you know, maybe there's a way to, you know, link your information or have you participate on some of those events, those local city events. So we can certainly keep you in mind when we, when we do that.
Yeah, thank you guys so much.
Yeah.
And thank you for your constant, consistent support. It makes a huge difference, and it means a lot to us.
Yeah, absolutely, Rich. It's a pleasure. I just have one announcement.
Mm-hmm. Saturday, May eighteenth, is our annual fundraiser. I think I'm talking loud, but I'm not.
No.
Saturday, May eighteenth, is our annual fundraiser, denim and diamonds. We've been doing it since two thousand seventeen. It is a, I, I love it because it is, it was a great time together, but it's fun. It's a fun event, and this year, honestly, I think it's gonna be more fun than it's ever been. And so it's at the Hillborough Elks Lodge. They hosted us there. We stayed there because they are the best sponsors in the whole world with this. And, and they, they just give so much, and they're a diamond sponsor, and so it goes all the way from the top with dollars to the bottom with serving dinners. And they're just, it's amazing. So we're very, very thankful. We'd love to see some of the city council join us. We'd love it if you could just get a table and all sit together and have fun. But we really would have been trying to push this with all the cities right now and getting them in the door. So I know you have busy schedules, and you're invited to everything under the sign, but make this one number one, wouldn't you?
They're not, they're gonna open on Thursday.
Twenty, oh, yeah. Tickets are out. That's right. They're coming out this week.
Oh, okay. Maybe Counselor Page can help corral us.
Danielle has been asking for me to buy a table. I'm like, you're not having to know these guys. Oh, yeah, you're all right. So, yeah, we'll, we'll, I have, I have another prospect, but we always do, we could, you know, people there.
Yeah, it's great. You get, with that table, you get all your
Yeah, it's great. You get with that table, you get all your seats, get eight or ten, whatever you want. Plus, you get your name tag, your name on the table. So there's some exposure showing that your city isn't there at all. And uh we just love to have you.
Yeah, hi. Uh I wanted to say, uh you must have some wonderful people working in your organization to get all that done. I mean, I don't know how many there are, but it was the assumption.
Yeah.
And last question, uh the right connection, how do they get funded that they could make all this happen? So are they you get a lot of income coming in of this grid? It really sounds interesting how how they're vending over backwards to make this all work for you.
Yeah, so they have um solid partnerships with uh Triment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and so they're, they are a contracted arm of Triment, which is great. And um there's also other funds that come in. Uh but this one, they also have a priority on rural communities in Washington County um and also seniors. And so we were able to, they were able to make a designation for survivors as a priority population, um knowing that the rural communities needed the transportation access so much more than the other ones.
Wow, that that is.
Amazing, yeah, very amazing. Thank you so much.
Very much.
Very much, yeah.
And then Sherry, Danielle was gonna, you know, I don't know.
Looks like I'm on the hook. Again. All good. Um so tonight is our uh staff report night. Can we first start with that?
Evening, some time may lie in. That was a really wonderful presentation. Um it's so great having them.
Yep, yeah, you're good.
So just a few highlights from my report. Um so a reminder this this week, on Thursday evening here at Jesse Mae's is our first Oregon Humanities Grant Funded Event. Uh we'll have Oregonians who moved here from Cambodia and Rwanda and um will share about that experience and will have learned about the cultures, their cultures, and have food from the different cultures also provided with the grant fund and an author who wrote a book called I Live to Tell the World About That. So that's here at Jesse Mae's uh this Thursday evening at six thirty. And then we also have a reflection for our current artist on display in the library, Sherry. And so that is on Saturday, last Saturday in April, while we're open from two to four. And we'll have some refreshments then. I'm just very excited about the representation we'll have at the Oregon Library Association Conference. Um our new friend who's the library president, Susan Brown, will be on the panel about friends and uh foundations and things. Um I've been asked to serve on a panel about engaging support staff. And then we have um people who are serving on different boards, our staff are on boards and so they'll be involved. Um it's really wonderful. We will be a little bit leanly staff next week for that, but um we also having a little bit less traffic in the library. You might have seen that in our statistics, they were down a little. I think there was an impact from the construction, um so that we did have an unexpected closure due to not having water um temporarily, but we're very excited about the sidewalks coming and the new water pipes. Um and so we're just rolling with it and but you just might see a little impact to our visitors. Do you have any questions, Billy?
I think the sidewalks would be great, uh a great opportunity for the community and just the connectivity to the library downtown is gonna be really awesome. So I was a little bit, yeah, it's gonna be very.
Yeah, with new with new sidewalks, you think that would be a fun thing for the kids to go to uh draw chalk art on the uh on the on the on the sidewalk. Have the uh weekend uh art, that's something.
Doesn't have to be book related.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have um police uh there, um Councilor Chetts. Hi.
Hello.
Good to see you.
Good to see everyone as well.
Not in a car.
So again, I'm also team shot uh standing in for Chief Jones, who is not able to earn vacations this week. Uh and before I get into the report, I did want to say that we had the presentation from the Family Justice Center that they truly are our best, law enforcement best resource in this area. That's that's just all included wrapped around as long as as far as survivors and uh the domestic sexual violence. So any help we can give them would benefit the community. I just want to say that.
And you're you're not biased at all because Rachel's your wife.
All right, but uh so in the month of March uh for this year, so we responded to or self-initiated uh two hundred and eighty-two calls resurfaced. Uh those calls are anything from ordinance violations, um parking complaints, to domestic disturbances and stolen vehicles. Uh speaking of the latter, we did have a a couple, a handful of mass violence and uh stolen vehicle calls in March, including one week with three stolen vehicles, uh which don't appear related. Um it's not unusual for us to to average a certain number of stolen vehicles in March. I think they averaged two the past couple of years. Um it's just historically high or weak. Uh it looked like Deputy Barbers and Chief Jones were able to attend the annual Easter egg hunt, and they had a great time. So I look forward to doing that next year. Uh the office, uh Chief Jones came in and we had a lot of uh reorganization as far as the office goes and refreshed it. Uh so anyone is welcome to come by. They were able to rebrand and update the area that I'm thinking. And then uh over the next several weeks, uh we're all going to be going through in-service training with the Washington County Sheriff's Office. Looking forward to that. But other than that, does anyone have any questions?
I I do. So if someone wants to come and see the new branding and the office, um that's um that's for them to come in through the front city hall or knock on the door, the police door. What's your, what's the best practice there?
Uh well, you brought that up because we we actually took the sign down from the back door to want to guide everyone more through the front area.
Okay.
Um so yeah, go through the front area and then if anyone's there, someone from the front, come get us, or worst case, they can always even call it on emergency dispatch and keep them by.
Okay, good. Any other questions?
About six months ago or something, I brought this concern up. At the time, there was probably nothing going on, but I noticed House Bill four one oh three. It uh has three classes of electric bikes now, and then they're coming up with four oh six seven end of the year. They're gonna have recommended laws on electric bikes. My concern was some of the kids are using like mop heads and stuff. I haven't seen, I travel a little bit. I haven't seen too much of it here yet, but that one, have you have heard anything about it?
Haven't heard anything passed down, uh you know, through the sheriff's office about it yet. However, the the laws surrounding um you know, electric bicycles, scooters, mopheads, they're a little convoluted and overly complicated. So it makes it uh I don't want to say harder to enforce, but you have to do your research prior to just make sure you're enforcing the right thing. Um so I I hope it clears some of it up, but it sounds like it could go either way.
Yeah, because I think the main crux of it was there was a kid that was killed on one and then and so that's the reason why they came came up with this bill, the house. I guess it passed pretty easily.
Yeah.
So I think they're trying to clarify it more. So I'm not sure how it breaks out for you guys.
I wish I had better information, uh worry on that, but maybe next time we'll be doing.
Okay.
Maybe that sounds like something that um could be discussed at National Light Out, you know, like uh it'd be an educational opportunity. Oh, uh Councilor Payton and then Councilor um Shaw, Shawling.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I just had a couple of questions and you might not be able to answer this, Deputy Chetts. How many uh cars would we typically see in a month on average stolen within North Plains in a typical twelve-month span?
Twelve-month span, I I it varies so much. I remember, you know, years ago, we had and I don't have the numbers to back it up a wee, but I worked these calls where we had the I we were just like the epicenter of stolen vehicles. I don't know what it was, but uh vehicles stolen and managed recovery stolen as well. Um but over the, it looks like over the past several marches, over the past years, we've we've averaged two. Um so I can't really extrapolate that, it varies so much, but uh it is unusual to have three in one.
Okay, perfect. So there's not like, oh, we average two every month. It's really just March seems to be the hotspot for for car thefts in North Plains. Is that what I'm hearing?
I would say at least so far.
Okay, perfect. Um that answers my question. Thank you so much.
Nevertheless, we uh we're speaking to the councils.
Okay, uh my question, two pieces, pretty simple. First piece is on these stolen vehicles. Are those dumps or so, and maybe that'd be called a recovery? I'm thinking people are dumping those here or they stealing from here, because I know there's been some dumped here as well. So is that a combination?
It's a combination. It's definitely both where um some cases will involve where a subject dumps one stolen vehicle from, you know, another jurisdiction and steals one from here, uh those types of deals.
Okay, uh the second piece isn't related to that. It's related to uh maybe more appropriate for the chief, but maybe you know. I was under the impression we could get information from our speed radar signs that would be at least um retrievable to give you a tool to find out where some spots, you know, what's going on with the actual speeds in those areas, since it's it's not a camera or anything like that, right? But it's uh I thought they were set up to provide feedback. And I maybe, maybe, maybe Dustin or Andy can answer that better, but uh do you, are you aware of that?
I am aware of that. I've heard that they they do the same thing you just mentioned, that they can capture that data. I personally have not seen the data nor been trained on how to collect it, but it's my understanding that they can capture that.
Okay, thanks.
Um we said a couple of times in the key map on the city, like where the crimes are being placed within each of them. It wasn't in this report. Uh has that gone away or?
I doubt that it's gone away. Um I did not personally prepare the reports. I couldn't tell you why it's not completed.
Anyone else? Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, guys.
All right, um I'm gonna turn to Dustin. He's on too. Hi, Dustin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sorry, I can't be there. I if you hadn't heard, I got the double whammy of both COVID and strep last week, and so I'm just getting over the the last little bits of it. I should be in uh to the office tomorrow though. I don't really have a whole lot in addition to the notes that I had already prepared for you all, except for um working on some loose gravel issues in the Pacific and three thirteenth area where the construction is going on. Um been getting some resident feedback that the there's a little bit more gravel in the intersections than we would like. And so with uh in conjunction with the three J inspection team and the contractor, we're working on a solution uh to possibly put some uh temporary asphalt in there, which wasn't originally in the in the plans, but we're we're working on something um in in the meantime, in the meantime. Also, with a previous accident on Glencoe and commercial, there was that accident where the railing had been damaged. And through insurance, we have also worked with a uh the company that built the railing to fix that railing. I haven't been back in the last week to see if it's been fixed. But the um the mechanics of that fix and that repair should be in the works. And whether it's fixed right now, I don't know. I'll probably see it tomorrow morning to see if if the that crew had already fixed that. The other comment that I had about the radar information, yes, we've got all the ability to capture speeds. Not a whole lot else, but as long as the GPS time and location is correlated and done correctly, we can pretty much pinpoint times when the speeders are are kind of doing their thing in a certain area and we can target and Chief Jones can can work with with how we we target the the safety around those times. Other than that, I um I just as my report as I had written and dealing a lot with personnel issues over the last year, not like bad personnel issues, but working on what I am wanting to see for the future over the next few years. I've had the last year or so to assess what our our needs are for the department. And so I'm starting to put together some rudimentary plans, more or less. And so some of the ideas that I had put in there are just works in progress more than anything. And with that, are there any questions?
The flag at Pickles Park was switched out. When we're, when the park being built, we were always, we were discussing who's gonna own that flag to that, I think it's cost like twenty-five hundred dollars for the flag. And there's some bragging about, oh, this guy or there this this area, this area, we're on it. Did we have, could you pick a bad tab and show how much was it?
I think I heard part of that question. The question was about the flag that was replaced.
Oh, we asked, and here we are.
I can.
So uh when we built the park, the flag was a twenty-five hundred dollar item or similar along those lines. And there's some vamping back and forth, like who's gonna replace the flags and how often. The discussion was, well, maybe we'll do it or be part of it and maybe the EDF will do some of it or there there's some discussion of who's going to get the flag. I was kind of wondering, at the end of the day, did we make that fight, can we be built? I mean, are we done? Is it with us or somebody else? And just like how much it costs and how often?
Think I got the gist of the question. What I heard was um what is the plan for the maintenance of the flags because of the one flag that was damaged? The the flags cost about twenty-seven hundred dollars apiece. And we, the original maintenance cycle is going to be about every six months and switch them out at Veterans Day and then switch them out at Memorial Day. That was the original plan. The flag that was flying over the winter got a little bit more worse than where because of the winter weather. So had the actual damage was a little bit more sooner than that that was expected. As far as the fixing of the flags, what I had learned from talking to Elmer's Flags was that if we catch the damage when it is early enough, and I wish I had known this information a lot sooner. If the damage had gotten a lot sooner, like the the edges were frayed by six inches, twelve inches or so, we should have immediately taken it down and they would have repaired it for free, is what the information that I had got. And there is a certain specification that they have that they could have kept on hemming the flag back and back and back. And that would have been the the right maintenance schedule uh from from the very beginning. And so now that that didn't happen, um and the flag that was damaged is probably damaged beyond repair at this point. But going forward, knowing what the actual standard is, we can take these But going forward, knowing what the actual standard is, we can take these flags down. When we can actually see the damage a little bit uh, visible a little bit beforehand. As far as replacing the. Other flag that was probably beyond its prime right now. My recommendation at this point is probably not have such a large flag in the winter. And we might have to go with a little bit smaller flag just because it's really rough with the wind and the rain. And maybe just have the larger flag uh, between Memorial Day and Veterans Day holidays. Um, but that's something that we can work on uh, in the future. Otherwise, we're gonna be taking the flags up and down probably every. Other month instead of um, every six months. Um, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I have another question out through one of my colleagues before, but it's nice to know. I was just wondering if North Plains is paying for that flag or do you have partners?
I didn't get that last part, I'm sorry.
Councilor Page, we have approached the.
Paying for that flag or do we have partners paying, helping um, uh, cover the cost?
Right now, I do not know of a partner other than the um, uh. The, the Parks Association, the, the, the funding mechanism for that. Otherwise, we would have to pay that out of our own maintenance fund.
Dustin, can I step in there?
Councilor Sheldon?
Okay.
Andy, you can't hear, he needs to speak up.
Oh, Andy?
Sorry about that.
Yeah, that microphone might be better. Um, yes, it's just been coming out of regular maintenance funds through the Parks and Recreation Fund. Uh, but we have, uh, we approached the Parks Foundation about two weeks ago to see about some sort of. Annual or semi-annual um, contribution for, for flag replacement. So we're compiling those um, costs for them for an application.
Yeah, it seems like we have, um, since we did repair them, they need slightly damaged. You have two flags. One has always been serviced, you know, probably even last month, I, I start to know that way.
So Sheldon, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, and maybe it's not a question, it's gonna be a statement. Uh, yes, the Parks Foundation uh, should be some, should have an own some stewardship of that. However, if we need a flag, I can get a flag, and we need to take care of our flags, and uh. Maybe it's, it's no fault of Dustin's that nobody passed that down because there was a transition here where a lot of tribal mo- knowledge left us. And unfortunately, it's like grandma's recipes, they don't get recorded, you don't know what it's about, so. If we need a flag, I'll get a flag. That's not gonna be a problem. I, I have multiple organizations and I can make sure that happens from, so. I have to have a need, somebody needs to come forward and then I can make sure that that need goes fulfilled. How's that? That's, that was a question I had that um, I didn't ask probably maybe a couple of reports ago because I was kind of curious. Uh, the second piece uh, to the flag that I'm interested in is, is there a ceremony when the flags changed? Is there any kind of a ceremony now? Is it just lowered and brought up? Is, is there's an organization that has a ceremony when you notify them that you're gonna be bringing it down? Because do you, do you know of that?
The ceremony that I thought was going on was gonna be the um, uh, the between the. The Memorial Day Ceremony and the Veterans Day Ceremony, and that was the maintenance cycle that I was under the understanding. As far as needing the repairs in between those, there. Had not been any discussion as far as I can tell, any type of ceremony, other than just the Memorial Day and the Veterans Day ceremonies.
Okay, so that makes sense that when you lower it. After that ceremony, you're retiring, well, not necessarily retiring, but refreshing the flag.
Correct.
There's a ceremony, I, I didn't know if there's ancillary, ancillary times where the flag's brought down, so if the goal's two times a year. And we catch it, sure, we could use a smaller flag in the winter, but no, I, 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 I'll just get a flag. I mean, we'll, we'll make sure we get a flag. And we'll make sure we take care of the flag. If we gotta get two flags and put them in a rotation, fine, uh, that's easy to solve. It's not a big deal. I just wanna make sure it happens, and I just wanna make sure that we creep that flag with the utmost respect. But that's, that's really all I have to say about your report. I have some other. Questions that I, I don't, I won't take offline, but we'll see where it goes in the coming months. I. I just wanna make sure that we're mindful about staffing, that we're making sure that um, our leadership knows what needs to happen. That you're giving the support you need and that we're looking at the cost and the opportunity cost because. I give back to the notion that we have to always consider contracting some of our services. Because it's more efficient until we get to that point. That's not always easy to address, but it's something I always want our city to be mindful of.
Any other counselors with comments or questions for Dustin? Thank you, Dustin. Hope you're feeling better. All right, next up is uh, Rowan.
Getting made off letters. Uh, this is somewhat of a bulk update for you guys on the WARA program and service projects that I've been working on over the last few months. We'll start off with one that hasn't necessarily got the flashy attention that maybe it, it deserves, but this is the. Free and reduced cost ADU plan program. Uh, this started several months ago, looking at the City of Eugene's pre-approved free-to-use. ADU plan set, and this was a plan set that uh, since it is being used in about five Oregon cities now and populated pretty quickly. Uh, we wanted to go into our own research into if North Plains would be able to use this resource that's being used around the state. Uh, after meetings with Washington County and the City of Eugene. Looking at those plans, looking at our unique system here in North Plains, where we have Washington County as our building services department. It was determined that the plan set in its current form is probably not adequate for Washington County standards. However, we had already gathered a lot of information about ADUs, about uh, what it would mean to get an ADU in North Plains. The resources that uh, property owners would need to access. And we still do have a plan set that with a few tweaks um, could be submitted to Washington County as a perfectly useful ADU. And so we pivoted to a phase one and a phase two system here. Phase one is just launching really an informational webpage on the North Plains website. Uh, that has information on what ADUs can be built in North Plains, how to know if you're eligible. What questions to ask, what agencies you might need to contact, all those informational resources. It could be very overwhelming to a property owner upfront. Um, lots of questions, not a lot of answers. We're trying to answer some of those questions, get people to make that phone call. Um, and, and get on their path to having an ADU. And then we will also provide the plan set with that caveat that this will need some tweaks, some additional engineering if you want to bring it. To Washington County and get your building permits and build this. Phase two is something that I'm really excited about. Uh, it's not, this is a bit of a longer range uh, moving into next year's projects. And that is a reduced cost plan library. Uh, this is something that Eugene also does. Not every city that has pre-approved ADU plans does a reduced cost library as well. But Eugene brought in the design community and had them submit their ADU plans and selected from that pool. Now, these aren't free. They're hosted on a website, which will link back to the architect's website where they can buy the plan. But it's sort of a, is a library, a culmination of plans that we would have mastered at Washington County that do meet all those Washington County standards. And that would reduce time, reduce costs for getting an ADU in North Plains. But that requires a lot of coordination with Washington County. It requires coordination with our local design community and a series of. Uh, selections and, and uh, negotiations, putting things together, so that will probably be uh, in the next six to eight months. Uh, moving on from that to something really relevant and happening next week is our downtown welcome sign. This event underworks for several months, and I'm so excited to see this in town at the corner of Commercial and Glencoe. It's being installed on Tuesday, and that evening we will be having a unveiling hosted by the North Plains Chamber of Commerce. Um, okay, they will be speaking. Uh, I know a few of you will be there, and I cannot wait to see this beautiful sign up. In our city. Um. Following that in June, which is coming up very quickly, we have our summer ice cream social, and. This was really a continuation of the sixtieth anniversary celebration that we did last year, where we had live music. We had the community organizations come out and have food, all in a event that historically been a little bit smaller. We wanna keep that energy rolling, and we have been working with our different community organizations, including the Chamber on getting sponsorships. Getting uh, support and the word out to really come together, have a good evening. That will be Thursday, June sixth, from six to eight P M. Uh, it'll be a great community uh, event, get everyone together. Uh, and, and really kick off the summer. Last, but certainly not least, we have the Organ by Design Workshop. Uh, this, this leans really into the rare resources that are such a valuable thing with this program. I'm so blessed to have access to. Um, and to bring those to North Plains. A few months ago, our director, Titus Tomlinson, uh, let me know that. He had a program that was interested, and it actually picked out of all of the service project this year, North Plains. To put some resources into, and that program is Organ by Design. And Organ by Design is a sort of a, a learning and a design-focused initiative headed by Bob Hastings. Has a lot of experience in planning and architecture, uh, both locally with Triment and other Oregon resources and internationally. He actually came up with the idea for Organ by Design while he was doing workshops in Scotland. And they want to help the community as a whole, both stakeholders and community members at large. To envision a project for North Plains. They've done everything from full-scale downtown visioning projects to single community center projects. We went through some ideas with the RARE team and Organ by Design, and right now we're really interested in looking at. The four warehouses downtown on the corner of Main and Commerce. Few weeks ago, we were able to have a conversation with the property owner and the team together. And they've got some interest. We're in the process of setting up the parameters of what that would look like, when that would be. And we're really excited to go forward and see if we can get a design workshop and get some community visioning uh, for that. Property potential, future reuse or to be envisioning. And that, I think, is the current projects. Uh, any questions?
Councilor Page?
I just wanted to, for people that are not us in the room. ADUs can for accessory dwelling units. I was thinking that like ADU, 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 like. What does that T O A mean? T O A is a people acting like. So uh, I just wanted to get after that. ADU is a accessory dwelling unit. It's, it only repeats you as ADU, so.
Yeah, sorry, that did, that did not make it into the, this report.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, and you're not gonna have answers, and that's okay. Part of what I read in your report was essentially. A program that we can't fully develop because we have a roadblock down the road a ways.
Yes.
Who told you we can't do this, and why did they say we can't do this? I, I do, and it may be more appropriate to take this offline, but I wanted to.
Okay, I, I can give a, a tour answer.
We are struggling for affordability in this entire state. That's, to me, is nonsense. You know, we're not supposed to make this complex. We're supposed to untie the knot. And I don't see why that can't be done. I wanna, I asked the question, why not?
Okay.
Somebody needs to answer that.
The conversation with Washington County came down to a, a difference between really the standards that are applied when you have a city that has. The planning and building services in the same houseboat with the city versus having, we have planning. With the City of North Plains and our building services are Washington County. Washington County implements much stricter standards for something that would be pre-approved or mastered than, say, City of Eugene. Implemented with this plan. The City of Eugene Building Department, they drafted the plan and they approved the plan themselves. All of their costs are in-house. And so they're comfortable with what they produce, the product level of detail that it has. Washington County is not comfortable with the level of detail that the plan has. Now, it is possible for us to go and uh, have the plan looked at by an architect and an engineering firm, get all of those details. The problem arises with the free-to-use part. Any firm that is going to add sheets or add details to the plan set is going to want a slice, a fee. Every time that this plan set is used.
That's exactly why we got the problem we have. The, the point I'm making is, I have, I appreciate process. It's, it's a necessity, but just to create barriers to this, to me, is just, it's, it's a bankrupt idea. And, you know, I'm thinking, can we acquire a grant to, to, to maybe get? You know, because I, this has to be engineered. They're not just putting up shacks down there, I don't think. So I'm thinking their standards, great. It's great to have great standards, but if nobody could build anything, what's the point of having a standard in the first place? Some of this stuff is ridiculous. I'm, I'm frustrated with the county. I, I'm just, I'm just telling you. I don't like, you know, I, I, when it's why not, why not? I wanna know why. I wanna know a lot more about why.
It, it was.
Uh, if I, if I can step in, uh, Councilor Sheldon, um, I, I really appreciate what you've said tonight. Rowan, you have nailed it um, on, on the response, and thank you, Councilor Sheldon, for the question. You're, you're a hundred percent correct. These. Are the difficulties we're facing right now and um, the inability to have a building department and some of the liabilities that go along with. Building a structure. Um, Rowan's answer was, was, that's exactly what happened. Uh, we kind of got rebuffed a little bit by the county. Um, because they did not want to take on some of the responsibility that some of these other cities are taking on by having a building department. You know, they, they are assuming some liability that the county's not comfortable with, and. So um, I agree that that creates some additional cost, but um, we are certainly trying to. Find a way around that, but um, I think if we can bring something to the citizens that gets seventy-five percent of the cost out of the way. Um, we're still moving it forward, and if we can, you know, also add to a library with some a- architects and designers coming into the fray. And offering up a plan set at a reduced cost, maybe in the five to seven hundred dollar range for a plan set that they would assume the liability for. Um, then, then we're still gaining uh, ground on this particular issue.
Okay, that's a fair answer. I still ask the question.
Great question. Great question.
From that, it's somebody at the county, I'm not sure who that is. I, I have, I find it just hard to believe that we pre-engineer something to a state standard. Where's the uniformity? I mean, where's the conformity? I, I just don't understand. I mean, you can pre-engineer something, you can greenlight that thing. Why does it need to be stamped by anybody else? I just don't get it. We're failing at this. So, yes, it's great if we can provide something that's reduced. I'm, I wholeheartedly support that. I think we just need to find a step further. Granted, I don't want to see us uh. You know, essentially get into a risk with liability, but there's a way around this. There's gotta be a way around this. Washington County can't have the most incredible standards in the entire state. I'm sorry, I'm so fired.
Uh, I think there's work in progress here. You're right. Uh I think there's work in progress here. You're right.
Any other questions?
Other question was, so where we're at, it's a follow-up. Wh- what were the anticipated costs? Uh Steve mentioned the the cost. Where is the target now with the current dilemma of the plan?
Are you are you the anticipated cost of the reduced cost plan?
Yeah, in other words, what would a consumer face to go get this plan um through the channels that they need to go to until we can fix it? If we can fix it.
On an individual basis, I don't have a quote for what it would cost. We did uh we did not go through the whole process of uh pricing out everything that Washington County wanted. It was uh there was a list. Um Steve, I think you did get a quote for at least the roof bracing.
Uh yeah, that that's a great question, um Council Sheldon, and we should follow up on that for you to get the exact estimate on that. Um but just if somebody had to go out and get a gabled roof engineered. Um and and I think we were getting a little bit of a a favorable estimate on that. It was in the seventeen hundred dollar range. Um but I would estimate it 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 could be more.
Great, thank you.
And it's.
And that was just to get the plan structurally engineered to submit it to the county to have the review. And then there would be a cost at the county and so we need to bear that out a little bit for you to help you understand a little bit more about the overall cost to what a a citizen may pay because they would they would incur that same thing for the foundation and some of the bracing of the structure. Those were the components that the county um was not comfortable with, that they wanted us to um do a little more work on. That the other jurisdictions, the building department was was assuming some of that liability on they. I don't know how they were doing it. We didn't get a lot of clarity on that, but that was the difference between having a building department apparently in-house and and not.
Okay, thanks. And I I have a follow-up question to that, not to be an antagonist, but I'm wondering is there anybody that has a pre-engineered A D U plan in this county? Obviously not. You went to Lane County, right?
Uh that's that's correct.
In my research, there is not a pre-approved A D U program in Washington County. I don't believe so. Uh right now, I know there's pre-approved A D U programs in uh as small as little towns as Gold Beach. Um as big as Eugene, Salem, Bent uh and Grants Pass. But nothing in Washington County and uh nothing in in our specific area, a lot more south in the state. But once again, we we'd be more than happy to run through the costs with you and also uh show why we pivoted a little bit more towards the reduced cost program, reaching out to our design community in the meantime while we work through the issues with a master or a pre-approved free plan. Um getting our folk line different out if it's still easier.
Yeah, I think that's great. And I think, you know, we could be more innovative than the county. I'm not sure whether the county hasn't jumped on this. They're talking about affordability. Every other word they say in a sentence practically just drives me insane.
Oh, I do think it's getting traction. I think this is a relatively new uh concept, so um great, great questions, Council Sheldon, and and I I hope that we can, by being maybe one of the first in Washington County to to bring the concept forward. Um others will follow and and maybe we'll get some loosening of of the guard a little bit to help us, you know, get this through the the gates. So we don't have these barriers.
Any other comments or questions for Rowan? Steve, we have you up next.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and uh City Council. Um I didn't have my picture on earlier because I have such an echo that sometimes I had to put my laptop up to my ear to hear everybody. So if I if I take my picture off, it's just so I can hear the questions. Um but I think the highlight of my staff report tonight is the um fact that we've been contacted by Greenlight Development um about the two acre parcel out there in Bryn Hill. Um this is a uh a developer that provides a more of a workforce housing type of a housing project. And it it brings um some some new um uh situations to the city in terms of how we would review the project. Because of Senate Bill Eight that was um approved back in uh twenty twenty-one. And well, paint kind of a nutshell of what that gets to is about a needed housing. And and what that bill and and the state has kind of said is that that all housing is is really needed. And that um you should just have clear and objective standards for that housing, regardless if it's um a subdivision or if it's multifamily or whatnot, the the standard should just be clear and objective to get that housing approved. And uh it kind of did some uh furtherment of that as well when it comes to commercial zoning or zoning that might be mixed-use or industrial. And it gave some liberties to this type of housing where it would be uh mixed, I mean excuse, but um uh workforce or or more of an affordable type of a housing project. It said you would not have to do that commercial component um that you would otherwise if um it was just a market price type of a housing project. And so like we had in that first go around with J T Smith, where they brought forward a mixed-use housing project for that property. This developer might bring forward a strictly housing project, you know, of about sixty housing units for that property versus that mixed-use component. So that's a a really uh new development for the city and and something that um if it continues to move forward, we're going to bring forward to you in a work session so they can present to you a little bit about um their ideas. Uh but I think that that's really one of the biggest highlights. You know, the the Planning Commission also recommended approval of the Sign Code Amendments with a a few moderations. And then uh we had a recent submittal of a conditional use permit for a marijuana dispensary, which um would be coming before the Planning Commission. So uh that's all I have for you tonight.
Counselor Finch.
So that two acre unit was supposed to be uh commercial for like small restaurants. Uh coffee house or something like that and a lot of tedious years spent arguing and wrestling with them to get that made. Um that's supposed to be in effect for five years. Uh before we say, hey, let's go put some little housing there and it's it's they were not supposed to be the goal of that. The goal of that was to give some commercial space to that area.
Um I I did hear most of your question, Counselor Page, and you're right, it is unique, right? They're they're actually saying that um housing is more important than maybe this commercial component. And that um therefore there should be some um some forgiveness for that, if you will. There should be an allowance for the housing to move forward over the commercial component. Um up to the point where you could get an increase in density, right? So you could get maybe a density greater than what we would normally allow um to get additional housing. That that's what the rule says and we are working through some of this with um our attorney and and their attorney. But um um as I mentioned, we really want them to come forward to you folks in a work session and share some of their thoughts with you um before they submit an application. So so there's a good understanding of how this all works.
Awesome. Anyways, that's supposed to be uh commercial for uh small businesses for that community. What we could do is say then, hey, we gave more people a credit in there and that's fine. But the real issue that that was by design, that was supposed to be commercial.
Well, you know, that is um the the state is kind of throwing design out, right? The the design now is housing.
Yeah, let's let's bring them to the table and let's have a conversation about this. Um who's who's wanting to change this? I don't know, confused on who's actually driving the train on that one. So to speak.
It's in C is what it's currently zoned as.
True. So, when do you expect uh um that they come forward to have a conversation with us, maybe in a work session? Do you have an expectation on date?
Um that's that's a good question, Mayor. Um I I really don't. Um I I think it's going to be sooner than later, but if I had to uh give you an estimate, I would say probably sometime in June.
Hey, this sounds like something we need to definitely revisit, so um Counselor Kendall, did you have any?
No, just before we go to the point, we should look at it. Before it starts here.
We do. Okay. Counselor Davin, anything from you? Okay. Counselor Smith?
I guess I have one comment on that. We have one over on Sunset Ridge too. That's a piece of property like what you're talking about here. And I'm not sure how long that's been sitting there without any offers on it. So is that something that could be over there instead? I guess that'd be a conversation we have and you.
Yeah.
Put we can put that in with.
Okay, all right. Any other comments for Steve? All right, thank you, Steve. Hope you feel better too.
If it's somebody's question, I apologize. I I thought you were done, so thank you.
All right, um I let's see, anyone you could be of Bill up next?
Good evening, everyone. Uh first off, just want to give an apology. Um we were really, really wanting to um talk to you about uh parks maintenance and Parks Department um funding and um like Dustin said, he was hit. I tested positive for coded COVID Friday, um but he got double hit and so between the two of us. Um we just weren't going to be ready for tonight, so we'll we'll get back to you with information on that as soon as possible. Um and definitely after we're both um fully recovered and and working around other people. Um so stay tuned on that. Um as far as the Finance Department report goes, um it this uh the report does reflect information through the end of March. So that's the first three uh months of twenty twenty-four. So um kind of the new information or is just kind of the quarterly update on uh capital and special funds, uh special remedy funds that we have. Um so um I it it's a long report. I think it's goes over ten pages. Um as far as operating funds go, um general fund, water funds, streets and Jesse Mays. Um the month of March was kind of business as usual. Most departments and and the other funds besides general fund, all the funds are operating. All the funds but Jesse Mays are operating um near or below budget uh to date. Um Jesse Mays, again, we kind of we restricted operations in February. So um uh revenues for that fund in particular are down even below what they have been, what it has been trending. Because we just haven't been renting it as much, so not the revenue um for it. So it's still operating in its challenged fiscal situation, but we knew that going in um and tracking it this way. But as far as the departments generally, most of the departments are tracking at or below budgets. Um I do mention that community development um is out ahead of budget um compared to uh the the through the month of March, just kind of average per month um expenditures that are budgeted just because of U G B process that everybody's well aware of. Um the Library Department has done a phenomenal job of getting grants lately. But we haven't formalized how to track the grant expenditures in a way that don't make it look like spending is above budget. Um it's all unexpected, unplanned for revenue. So if you see the Library Department with expenditures a little higher than usual, they're not spending out ahead of what you planned and approved in the budget. It's just grants and their grant success. And so we'll we'll modify how that looks um as we move forward. Um as far as the capital, uh as far as the capital funds go um through March. Um my the the most active fund to mention um is the Public Works Building Fund. Um you we've gotten a little over a million one um in terms of money from the state to help fund the building. And that's covered the vast majority of the expenses to date. Um our capital funds, our capital S D C funds will also help pay for the public works building. But so far, monies from in from the state have been the vast majority of resources required. Um and so the project moves ahead um at at pretty good clip. Um and so Andy can probably update on on how that how how that is kind of more taking shape, but on the money side, that's what it looks like. Rest of the capital funds, um Lennar, uh you we previously reported that Lennar got a um a a transportation development tax credit for different um street improvements they put in that qualified. And um in the first three months of twenty twenty-four, they drew down about four hundred thousand dollars of that credit. So their credit is worth four hundred thousand dollars less. Um because of continued building and continued um permit T D T B um at building permits. So uh they'll continue to draw that credit down as they continue to have um units permitted. Um we do have some S D C credit and reimbursements that we'll be paying to um Lennar soon. And I have the the totals detailed there, but they've put in different public improvements that qualify for S D C credit. And um we'll be paying them, we'll be reimbursing them for those those expenses um for the development agreement. And we've done that before. That happened um a couple of quarters ago, so it's kind of consistent with when they put in a lot of public improvements that have qual- a lot of improvements that qualify for credit and reimbursement um in the in that in the S D C mechanism um in Bryn Hill. As far as other capital projects that are, excuse me, capital fund info that's kind of worth reporting on besides those. Your A property tax revenue is pretty much on target. Um it's nearly seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars today so far this fiscal year. And that's right about where we projected. Um so that's positive news. Um I guess the other thing is is we're doing very well in terms of general fund, regular property tax revenues, getting back over to the general fund. Um we're still on pace to actually be to to have revenues ten percent higher year over year than last year property tax revenue for the general fund. Um we'll see if that materializes by June thirtieth exactly, but we're on pace to bring in about eight hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars this year. Um we'll see, but it's looking to be the case and we budgeted about a five or six percent year-over-year growth. So we are doing better than than we budgeted. Um and as far as water accounts, the uh you know, aging water accounts. We we have a total overdue water account balance in the city right now, sixty days or over of just under two hundred and seventy dollars. Uh we have one commercial account that's sixty days plus. And right now we have three residential accounts that are sixty days plus overdue. Um and those have tended to get paid off in a sixty to ninety day. Once they go over sixty. Um we we haven't really had any in a while go over sixty to ninety, but that's where they stand right now is um three residential, one uh non-residential account for a for a total of less than three hundred. So we're doing pretty good on um overdue water, on very overdue water accounts at this point. Um I, there's a lot of information. It's a ten-page report. I stand for questions, happy to answer them. Uh but I won't delve too much into the weeds and all of that. Um it's it's pretty much steady as she goes so far for the month of March.
Any questions for devil? Counselor Finch?
Hey, you speak about the uh you have a you have an odd reduction of uh monthly payments from the tax when operating. Anyone speak a little bit about that? Feel that?
I have my, I'm sorry, Counsel Page, I have my volume up and and it wasn't easy to hear you.
I will uh speak louder. I mean, have you uh you mentioned that there's been a odd fuel tax revenue that's down during the month by an operator. Uh can you talk a little more about that? That's kind of ambiguous.
Yeah, uh Counsel Page, okay, gotcha. Um yes, so one of the one of our gas stations, for whatever reason. Um we haven't gotten an ad, we we've had our hands full. We haven't pursued it yet is the honest answer. Um I just pulled the report together last week and kind of just found or just identified their most recent payment, which was the week before actually. Or not the week before, two weeks before. They they paid about a third of what they normally do month to month. So we're, we just saw this. We're not sure why. Uh it's an odd amount. Um we've observed that they've had normal traffic. So there's some weird discrepancy there and and we just need to follow up with them and see what happened for the month of March. It's just a, it's an anomaly that we'll follow up on is the is the answer.
Hey, any other questions for Bill?
Hi, Bill. The report looks good to me. Everything looks uh, and I'm assuming you can hear me okay?
I can, I can.
Okay, so I'll make it brief because I know it's harder to hear. Uh, I don't have anything I can see that we need to take offline. I do think the the water fund two ten, you can drop that out of the report as far as I'm concerned. If we're not exceeding two percent of, you know, that's not even a reportable amount. You guys are managing that well. We're we kind of got the pass behind this. I think just scrub that from your report going forward unless it pops up and if it comes up above two or three percent or something you think we should be aware of, then. Go ahead and bring it back on. Other than that. I think it looks good.
Okay, uh, thank you, Councilor Sheldon. I I I will usually err on the side of too much rather than not enough info. Um, even if that means longer presentations and um more questions, but I I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Um, Councilor Paper, did you have anything for Bill? Okay, great. Thank you, sir. Hope you feel better. All right, Andy, you're up.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um. I too have been a little under the weather like the rest of them, so uh I'll spare everyone else the germs and. Potential viruses tonight. Um, I understand you're having problems hearing us. Is that true?
Yes.
Can you hear me decently right now, or should I have Lori check the settings?
Yeah, we're almost done now.
Well, we're.
I'm struggling to hear you. I'm reading, hey, yeah, we have. Um.
I will speak very slowly and clearly, so the closed captions are accurate. Try to. Um, but but I will be brief. I I did want to say, uh, just reiterate again, thank you. Uh, very much to everyone who made it yesterday, sat through a full sunny day for the retreat. I already spoke into Jason. He'll get me some of the results um within a week, and we'll have something that should be adoption-ready. Um, in for the statements from the council in May. Um. I will still be pursuing some grants to the bill till uh the the bitter end here. I've got about a little less than six weeks left. Um, to particularly in that room, if you look in the ceiling in Jesse Mays, you'll see. Some wireless access points. We had those installs. We'll be pursuing some Mac grant funding to get that technology. Um, reimbursed for better wireless service in the room. Um. I also recognize that one of our uh more recent night meetings, the lighting is pretty bad in there. Um, I'm sure you're you can look up and 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 not in agreement. So I have um Energy Trust coming out Thursday to take a look at potentially doing some no-cost. Um, energy-efficient lighting upgrades for the building. And they're going to swing by the library, too, and take a look and see if any of the lighting there needs um replacement. They have a community facility. Small business um no-cost program that we're going to be um pursuing there. And then as a little update for um my my departure and the transition. Um, I've spoken to um a few different recruiters, and I should have some proposals probably next week. And uh a few different potential interim candidates, knowing that a recruitment. Um, this day and age could take four months, could take eight months. It 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 will definitely stretch um through the summer. And um I've gotten two, two responses back from two of those candidates. One. Seems positive and um hopefully we can um seal that deal later this week and um but I'll be working with um. Working with, you know, obviously finding someone that can work well with the city council. Because ultimately that's who they'll be responding to and reporting to, just like I do, and also someone that can be here to uh support the staff in um. A time of need, you know, transition, there's a lot going on, and I I think we'll find a a good person to do that. Um, that person would also be working directly with the recruiter as well to make sure that process is uh going along um as it should. I'll also be putting together a transition playbook, kind of dumping out everything in my brain um for for the next person, so. I'll be working with the the staff and any sort of interim um manager on on putting that together as well. And whoever would be coming in as interim, they would have some overlap with me to make sure there is a handoff there. Um. Bill, Robin, Dustin, um, you know, Steve, they're all, they're all great, uh but obviously having someone come in to keep the seat warm. And make sure the process goes the way it should and being there to support the council. Um, it's it's too much to spread that across everyone else, so. Um, I think we'll find someone that that can be very uh very useful and and beneficial at the same time um for the city over the summer. So hopefully, um, more to come next week um on that. Those are kind of the the couple updates that I wanted to give right now. If there are any questions, um. Or anything that we didn't go over yesterday that you want to uh bring out, please, please do.
Any questions or comments for Andy?
I have just one, one quick question for Andy. Can you hear me okay, Andy? Um, I just wanted to know, I saw in your report, um, just a little update about the G O A area, but I just wanted to know. If you had um a crystal ball for a timeline of. What year we might start seeing some progress on that property after the abatement?
Well. It, I think the definition of progress is is where the answer resides. Because after abatement, then you can move to doing something substantial with the properties, you know, demolition, clearing and grubbing. Uh, getting them more um development ready. Um, that's something uh we'll be working on. I'll be working with Bill on that before I before I leave, certainly. Um, if we're ready for abatement to start taking place later this month, that means in there. That means that those properties can uh will be cleared up to to be to be demolished and and ready for for development activity. We have received um interest from the sheriff's office. That, you know, when they when they know that there are uh buildings that are. In need of major repairs and they're probably scheduled for demolition, that they like to use them for training activities, so. There's a former police chief that we know that is now in a different role of, and he likes to. Part of their mission is blowing things up. He has already reached out to me saying, could they could they schedule something there? Um, so that that's something that we're looking at. It could happen as early as June uh potentially there. Um. But we'll certainly be working with the contractors. As a matter of fact, we have a meeting with this abatement contractor and they specialize in these things on um. Wednesday, is that right, Bill? I think we just scheduled it today. So we'll be learning more kind of what that timeline uh would look like. But I think um with that project in particular, I think the Urban Renewal Agency is primed um. To really start showing the community that it's going to start moving towards uh development-ready activity. And that's, you know, that's potentially an incentive or a carrot, too. In working with the state, let's keep in mind, the state has been footing the bill for um a a lot of this work. Um, that it's another carrot to show that the development, uh the market and the development community that it's uh will be moving towards. Pre-development or development-ready as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments for Andy? Thank you, Andy. I hope you're feeling better, too. All right, Council report. Uh, I know I was at the Planning Commission on the tenth, uh where they talked about the sign code. And um, I think um Steve covered that in his report. Um. There was a little confusion about the parks board, and unfortunately I did not attend that. Shame on me. So I'd be happy to take uh someone else's uh parks board meeting uh in the coming months. Uh, if you want to have a night off, I'm happy to do that. And. Go ahead.
Good to. I'll try.
Okay.
That's, I, I can do it, but really, it was fun.
You want to?
I was, I was gonna, hey, anyway, spot, report.
I'm happy to, you decide otherwise, so. Um, and then it looks like you uh have a library board on Sunday, right, Council?
Yes, it's seven o'clock now.
Okay, good, all right. Any other reports, anything else we need to be aware of? All right. Council Paper, you're good? All right, thank you. All right, well, uh, certainly appreciate everybody's um chiming in tonight, being on soon. Certainly, again, I hope you all feel better. Soon, and I'm going to go ahead and close the city council meeting at eight forty one. Good night, everybody.